Moore.
Here.
O'Kane.
Here.
Shaner.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
We stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Interview for Senior Advisory Committee, Judy Seaman, please come forward, state your name and address, and tell us why you want to be on the committee. Oh, we have to call?
Hello. My name is Judy Seaman. S.E.A.M.A.N. My address is 3800 Chippewa Court, no one can spell that either, in Sioux City. And I moved here about five years ago, and I've been fortunate enough to find a number of places to volunteer and learn more about Sioux City. And I was just, I volunteer quite a bit at the Senior Center, the Center for Active Generations, in various capacities, so I see and talk to seniors every day and hear their concerns and their questions. So when I found out from one of the members there would be a vacancy on the Advisory Committee, I was very excited, and I turned in a request to join that group.
Questions?
You seem like a very service-oriented person, so I want to thank you first and foremost, because you were a title teacher throughout your entire career, and that takes a big heart to be a title teacher, so thank you for that, from one teacher to another. You seem like you're involved in a lot of different, a lot of different things, a lot of different programs, and thank you very much for your interest. We need a strong Senior Advisory Board, and when I first came onto the council, we were missing quite a few seats. It's great to see people step up. It was very interesting hosting a meeting for the Active Generations to host a meeting, our last advisory meeting, and I think it was really successful. You're not the first person that's come to us from Active Generations, and I just thank you for stepping up and wanting to be a part of it.
Well, thank you so much, Dan. When you quit working, if any of you retired, you suddenly have all this time, all this time, and I thought, I have to get out and do things, I'm not going to stay home and watch TV, so it's been an adventure, and thank you for having me in.
Great, thank you, we appreciate it. Consent agenda today is items three through 11, consider them to pass unanimously unless a council member asks for a vote. If you want to speak on an item, please come up as I read that item, state your name and address for the record. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the consent agenda. Second? Three is the reading of the City Council minutes of August 8th and 11th. I need to abstain on the 11th. Four is a motion approving the Civil Service Commission annual report. Five are resolutions authorizing fire rescue to accept a local fire protection and emergency medical services grant to purchase smoke alarms. Six is a resolution awarding a purchase order to integration partners for extreme switches and access points for the new law enforcement center. Seven are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution awarding a consulting services agreement to DGR Engineering for the Big Sioux Pedestrian Bridge Crossing.
Could I ask a question on item five before we turn the page? On the smoke alarms, is there anyone here from Sioux City Fire and Rescue? No, okay. I just was going to ask how citizens could get a smoke alarm, you know, I know that we haven't.
Call fire prevention.
Due to this, you just call fire department? Okay.
Yep. B is a resolution approving a school trip service agreement with the school district for student transportation. Need to abstain on that item, conflict of interest. C is a resolution approving a master software service agreement, a master professional service agreement, and a statement of work agreement with Bentech for Benefits Administration System. Does this mean IBC? I don't quite understand, this is different.
This is to allow you to do online open enrollment and online management of your benefits.
Okay. E is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Gallagher Asphalt for the installation of thermoplastic pavement marking systems at various downtown intersections. Somebody's really got to explain this to me, because this is very, very expensive. And I don't understand what kind of value we get in this.
Dave Carney, Public Works Director. After two times trying to replace the bricks in Historic Fourth, we got, met with the Historic Commission, and they would allow us to do this, in place of the bricks, it'll look like bricks, but it won't be bricks and be more sustainable.
What's the difference between this and stamped concrete, which would be much cheaper?
Because everywhere we've done our stamped concrete, it hasn't held up, so we're trying something different, something that's going to try to hopefully last much longer than our stamped concrete that we've done.
What do you mean it hasn't held up?
If you look at the stamped, or the colored concrete we have on the rest of Fourth Street, it's deteriorating, look at the shake-on color we did on Morningside, it's wore away. We're having a lot of trouble on it, on other installations we've done in like the Pearl area, we're having a lot of problems with it, just.
And why do you think?
Because we look for a product that'd be something more durable.
Where did you come up with this product?
We did some internet research and came across them, and went and looked at some stuff that they sent us for places they've done it up in Minnesota and other places where they have winter traffic, and it looks like it's holding up pretty well, so we're going to try it.
And this is bonded to the asphalt?
Yep.
And then it's flexible, so when it frees thaw, it's like a, kind of a foil type?
It just, it adheres to the asphalt.
Right.
It becomes a part of it, yeah. You can buy, they have two different products, one that'll adhere to concrete, one that'll adhere to asphalt. And we took this one, like I said, in front of the Historic Commission, so we could get approval that it could meet what they wanted for Historic Fourth Street.
Dave, what kind of warranty does that work cover, then?
I don't know off the top of my head, Dan, what the warranty period.
Well, I think that's pretty important, if you're spending $55,000, and what's pretty important to me, then, is you say it's failing so bad in Morningside, I know on the intersection there, there are some bad spots, but when can we expect that you'll be doing those?
We're going to see how this holds up first, on this.
Well, you would, you always start downtown. I don't want to always start downtown. I, I think there are other areas of the community that deserve to be first once in a while.
Well, this had to do with, this had to do more with failure than.
I was going to say, the bricks were all.
You've got asphalt down now that's working.
No, he's saying the reason that we're replacing this is because the bricks are all popping out.
But the Historic, the Historic Commission, we couldn't just leave the asphalt, we either had to put the bricks back, or come back with something alternative.
And what he's talking about in Morningside isn't the failing of like bricks popping up, it's just that the stamped concrete.
If it's a trip hazard, it's a trip hazard. What difference does it make what it is if it's failing? And this has been failing out in Morningside on that one part, that's the only part.
Because you're just talking about it being worn smooth, right? Like as far as the stamped.
Well, it's worn to color right off, yeah.
Yeah, the color is off, and then it's more worn down, the stamped concrete area. The stamped concrete area.
It's in that concrete.
Could be, yeah, but I mean, I'm just saying, a lot of spots where we've done the integral colored concrete, it's, it just hasn't held up. I mean, the best example is go look in front of the promenade, all the colored concrete there, that's not brick.
Correct.
Colored, scored concrete. It just hasn't held up compared to the non-colored concrete that's right next to it. I don't know what it is with the color, what they add in for the color, but it's just not holding up well to traffic and salt and winter maintenance.
And if this works, I think it will be a decorative option.
I've had a couple of concrete for 25 years in front of my building. First time it failed right away, but that was because you had poor craftsmanship, but I've had it for 25 years now.
Wow.
Are you talking on the sidewalk, that little stretch?
I'm going to vote no, if we don't even know what the warranty is, I'm not, I'm not going to vote for stuff we don't have any idea, we're just hoping it works, so. You're pulling the item? No, just, oh, yeah, go ahead and pull the item.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
No.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
I think it's terribly important when you introduce a new product to know what the warranty is, I think that's terribly important if you're researching things. Can you let us know on that, Dave, please? Thanks. E is a resolution, amending resolution number 2022-030632 relating to agreements with MG88 Coal Storage and Coal Link Logistics for the land in the Donna Park Urban Renewal Area, approving the First Amendment to the Development Amendment Assessment Agreement and a corrective city deed. Eight are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution authorizing payment to Reich Painting and Decorating for painting the Long Lines Recreation, Long Lines Family Recreation Center Interior Second Floor. B is a resolution approving a partial settlement of a tort claim and authorizing payment. Number nine are actions relating to property. A is a resolution accepting the offer of sale of land from Telkotriad Community Credit Union for the Northern Valley Crossing South Regional Storm Improvement Project. B is a resolution inviting proposals for the lease of land in the combined Central Sioux City CBD Urban Renewer, announcing the intent to accept a proposal of council and scheduling a hearing. C is a resolution offering, authorizing a certificate of appropriateness in the Historic Fourth Street District for facade improvements at 1004 Fourth Street, the Historic Preservation Commission recommends approval. Ten are applications for beer and liquor license, eleven active transportation advisory committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items?
Scott.
Okay.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore. O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Appointments to boards, commissions, committees. Twelve is a motion appointing Nathan Swartz to the Yamanashi Sister City Committee. I'll move that. Second?
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Thirteen is a motion appointing Steve Postolaka to the Yamanashi City Sister City. What? Close enough. To the City Committee, I just spent 45 minutes with him, that's, should know, I'll move that. Second?
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Just want to make sure we're appointed correctly.
Waters.
Aye.
You know, you go to court all the time, you have your name changed, something like Post, real fast. Fourteen is a hearing resolution approving plans and specs for the Hamilton Boulevard paving and project. I'll move that. Second? Public hearing is now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Fifteen, discussion regarding adjustments to the parking ramp rates, meter charges, bag meter charges, and parking fine.
Dave Carney, Public Works Director. So, this is the first, we were asked to bring this as a discussion, before we brought this up for an ordinance change, which we'll bring on September 12th, I believe, is what we're doing, for its first reading. Staff is recommending that we increase our monthly parking rates by $5, our one and two hour and four hour meters from 75 cents an hour to $1 an hour, our 30-minute meters from 60 cents to 80 cents per 30 minutes, our 10-hour meters from 50 cents to 65 cents per hour, and our bag meter from $8 to $10. Also increase our overtime meter charge from, or fine from $10 to $14 after 30 days, that increases from, instead of $15, it'll be $21, and after 90 days, it'll be $42 instead of $30. And finally, then increasing other parking violations from $35 to $50. And basically, back in January, the Finance Department came to us, showing that after this fiscal year, we would be, our fund balance would be negative, and ideally, the parking fund should be a self-sustaining fund, that funds all of our ramp improvements, our ramp repairs, and then also our maintenance of our meters, and also our staff that takes care of the one and a half meter attendants we have, and our full-time and part-time, or actually, just the full-time staff person we have for that, our part-time person is actually dedicated to skywalks, and then also our parking superintendent.
So, is that a total of three and a half FTE?
Yes.
Dave, primarily, you're telling us what's driving this would be the repairs and maintenance, or maintenance and repairs to the parking garages.
Our structures are the driver, I mean, obviously, we have some costs, we're replacing meters because the meter.
New meters are being, replacing the ones that are just worn out?
Well, no, we're going through a full replacement, because the meters we have are no longer, we can no longer get parts for, so we're replacing them, and then keeping the old meters, so we can scavenge parts off them. Yep.
Lack of parts for the.
Yep. The meter, they're, I want to say they're like 30 or something years old, they're, but they're, they are no longer serviced by the manufacturer.
If you had to rate, so we've got the parking garages, or parking ramps, we've got the meters, and we have staff, what's our biggest for maintenance and repair or replacement?
The structures.
Structures?
Yeah, the parking structures.
Without a doubt.
Without a doubt, yeah.
Because you've, you and I have talked about that before, and you're trying to teach me the appreciation of how expensive it is to have those parking garages, but that's why we need to have people use them and our resumes, but that's, that's really the big one, and the big ticket item.
Yep, and we have, two of them are older structures, the Rivers, Rivers Landing and Discovery, are older structures, and even Heritage, which is our, one of our newer structures, it's getting to eight, I mean, it's about 10 or 12 years old, it's starting to show deterioration in spots where we need to.
Is?
Yep.
After 10 or 12 years?
Yeah, it's a rough environment, I mean, all the salt that gets drug in, out the vehicles and wet, and it's, it's a rough environment.
And what's monthly rate going up again?
Five bucks. $5, it's, there's different rates, if you're, for a single car, if you just have one person, it's $50 to $55, if you're in a group policy of between 2 and 100, it's going from 45 to 50.
It's 50 to 55?
Yep.
Most of your other stuff's going up like 25%, but you're only raising that 10%?
We did, if you remember in 19, we raised the monthly parking rates then, and didn't adjust anything else, or we did adjust, we did adjust the fines, and that was, in one, in our discussions, initially, we had a higher rate increase on the monthly parkers, and through our discussions with downtown partners, it was kind of discussed that they'd rather put the, more of the onus on the violators than the.
Parkers.
The parkers.
When was the last time a lot of these other rates were raised?
I believe the meter rates. 2007 was the last time the meter rates were changed, the, like I said, the ramp rates were changed in 2019. Our hourly rate on our, this will start to separate, we'll actually, our hourly rate on our ramps is going to stay at 75 cents, so the meters will be higher, which they should be, it's a, it's a premium.
Premium, you're parking right in front of a business?
Yep. And when we did, we did find, you know, and I haven't looked lately, but after the first year, I know it was, we didn't have much of a revenue loss, when we did the first hour free, we increased our parkers, but then also in COVID, and so it's kind of hard to do. But we, I think that was a successful program to do the first hour free.
And plan on continuing doing that?
Yes.
And we've had a lot, an increase in activity downtown, obviously, the number of spot, or spots, I know that we're using the ramps in a lot of ways, and with Badger coming onboard, and some of the other projects, even with Commerce and Bluebird, those types of things. Do you see that offsetting, or is the increase utilization causing further deterioration? I mean, are we generating more by obviously having them more full?
Well, we'll have to see one, but I don't think it's going to make us deteriorate any faster now.
But hopefully be an increase in revenue, so we can start making some of those, those adjustments and acting proactively to really make those repairs about what we're going to do.
Dave, on the, on the increase in fines for the overtime meters, I'm just thinking out loud, so I get in trouble, I'm going to give you, give you a heads up on that already, I'll get in trouble for this, but, but seriously, I don't know what our collection rate is like for overtime meters for fines, I do know that people get extremely upset when they have a ticket, when they're meters, and I know we've got the app now, that you can extend the parking time on over, for meters, so you don't have an overtime ticket, but my question is, do you think, so $10 to $14, if you pay that within 30 days, or it increases, right, because after 30 days, the fines increase from $15 to 21? So if you pay it within 30 days, it doesn't increase?
It'll be $14.
After 90 days, it's really high. But what I'm wondering is, do you think if we kept it at $10, would you use, lose that much revenue, where I would be more inclined to pay a $10 fine within 30 days than a $14 fine, for example?
Well.
Or am I exaggerating? I'm just, look, I'm on the streets a lot, so I, when people get tickets, they're not happy, I know that.
We are, we are fortunate enough that we work with Woodbury County, that if they are a Woodbury County resident, they can't get their plates renewed if they have outstanding parking tickets, so we, our collection rate on Woodbury County residents is good, it's just, we just don't have that with the other states.
You don't have the leverage.
Yep.
But still, it used to be like $8 for a parking ticket, now you're 10, now you're going to 14, and unfortunately, that probably affects the person that least, can least afford it, and you're talking a 40% increase in that. Because that has gone up over the years, you can tell me it hasn't, but it has.
No, it, yep, it went up in, it went up the last.
I don't, I don't know how you can justify a 40% increase on that, but a 10% because I'm a monthly parker. Again, we favor the downtown dramatically, because the person that's parking down there probably lives somewhere else in town that came down, got 25 minutes late, or 20 minutes late, for whatever reason, doctor's appointment, so they get a 40% increase, parking the ramp, and I only get a 10%.
So staff.
You can, you can almost imagine where I'm going, how I'm going to vote.
So staff's recommendation was a $10 a month increase and a $2 per ticket increase, and it was with our meetings with downtown partners, that they thought it was better that was put on the violators versus the monthly parkers.
Because that, I get where Reagan's coming from, she's got to keep business owners happy.
Well, it's, that was, we were asked to take it to them.
To different stakeholders, just to get their input, yeah.
That's what the thing was.
I understand that, but there are stakeholders that won't be here to speak today, they got a ticket last year, and they're going to get a $14 one, they don't come to speak until they get the ticket, and you get to feel a lot more of those, Bob, than Dan and I do.
No, I know.
But they're irritated when they get that, and they're going to be really irritated with a $14 ticket, and you can say, we made it so easy, you can dial on your phone and do all that, guess what? Somebody my age doesn't get your meter situation.
Well, no, I think what, I think what Dave is saying is, he was just directed to reach out to different stakeholders, and then based off that feedback, made these adjustments, but if I'm wrong, I think Dave is saying, if you think we need to adjust back, this is why it's a discussion item before it comes back to us for a vote. You can direct Dave and say, no, I'd much rather have it be $60 per space, and I'd rather have it be a $10 or a $12 fine, he's just saying, that's why it's a discussion item, he was asked to go speak with the stakeholders. So rather than voting no, you just make a suggestion, and say, I'd rather have it this way.
Yeah, we, I mean, that, like I said, that was our initial proposal, was $10 a month on the, at the ramp rates, and only a $2 increase. And I know Tiff did, did call around, we are still by far lower on our ticket prices than other communities, they're, they're more in the $20.
God forbid we'd ever be low on something, that's always your argument, God forbid, God forbid we'd ever actually be low on something.
Well, or just be middle.
You know what, we should be, we should be more efficient than other communities, so. I guess I'd like a breakdown by revenue, how much, how much you get for parking revenue for tickets now, I mean.
So, in our, our actuals from last year, parking fines were $233,000.
No, no, listen, I want to break out of how much, if you paid, you've got to break out of how many paid in 30 days, how many paid, you don't have to do it today, how many paid in 90 days, you've got that breakout, I'd like to see how these.
And what the total percentage was that made.
And then what the revenue would be with your increases, that's what I would like to see, by category.
Let me get that for you.
That's kind of the chart that you, is that the chart you included with some of this, or not, or is that? They don't break it out by.
No, it's just, it's just giving you the violations as a total.
Mayor, but I wanted to ask you, on the overtime meters, the fines, you stated the point better than I did, about $10 versus 14, but do you hold, do you hold that for if it's over 30 days and they haven't paid it, or if it's over 90 days? I would penalize the heck out of them, that's just being irresponsible. Yeah, so getting it paid within the first 30 days should be something, something lower than the 14. Because they're just going to ignore you till they have to renew their plates.
Right.
Once it gets 90 days, they have. Okay, I just, well, I just wanted to clarify that, because it's 40% on each, each one, isn't it? Go from 30 to 42, but that's 90 days or longer out, so.
Well, and the other thing, that I'm always surprised or shocked, I mean, because of the mayor's point, I mean, I understand we want to be efficient and make sure that we're, you know, not trying to be at the highest level either, of fines in different categories too, but I'm always shocked, I think Sioux City, we try to be efficient, try to make sure that we keep things low, but gosh, you go to the old market, you're paying the meter until I believe it's 9:00 or 10:00 PM, and it's a higher rate, and I recently was sharing that I went to the city-owned ramp in Mankato, and weekends aren't free there, I paid $14 just to park one night and go to a wedding, I mean, I think we do try to cut our citizens a lot of slack in our downtown, and, and try to really promote as much as we can downtown, I think that we've tried to be as efficient as we can, but when you start operating in the red, you're going to unfortunately have to start passing that along, because what, what's going to happen is, we're going to have to replace or really work on those different parking ramps, and then we're talking real money, not just this, necessarily this type of increase.
But to not have a rate increase till two, since 2007 on some of these rates is not very, I've always.
It's not healthy.
To have moderate increases rather than.
Every year.
Big jumps.
I agree.
Where people can adjust, so we can say, well, we're so proud we haven't had a rate increase since 2007.
But that's not healthy.
That's an indictment that we should have been looking at these costs long before we have.
Almost like every two years, you go back and increase a lot.
Well, and parking meters are tough, because parking meters, you have to use coin amounts that.
Work.
Work into the hour, work into the 15 minute, you know, it's, 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 it'd be difficult to have like a nickel.
Yeah.
Increase over an hour, because it's, just doesn't divide out.
Unless, unless it's all.
I just got back from vacation, and there were no meters, there were signs, and you followed the, went, signed onto their app, and there wasn't a meter there at all, there was just a little small parking sign with a area, with a zone and a number, and.
We, we have that, you know, the parking ramp above the court right now, that's how it's parking, Park Mobile only, we didn't put any meters on it. After, if you're up there and it's open, you have to pay.
I was going to say, if it's, if it's Park Mobile, or if it's a credit card type machine, at least then you can have different increments, and it doesn't matter, to the mayor's point.
What kind of meters are we replacing as we?
They're, they're, they're the basic meters, we're not adding credit cards, we, that takes Wi-Fi and communication and all that, so, no, we just went with a basic coin meter, and we'll still have the Park Mobile app.
Is it impossible just to make them, start transitioning them into the signs, instead of a meter?
That would just be, all you do is sign up and say that require them to use Park Mobile.
Right.
I think the problem, you can run into that, you can run into people, some people don't want to download the app.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I didn't download the app, but I was still able to do it.
Yeah, well, we.
Through a website.
Separate from the app.
And you would still have to have a smartphone, and still have to have.
But people do, I mean.
No, I get that.
It is.
You're going to.
I'm not saying every single meter, but.
Last time I said this about my spouse, I got in trouble with people, but she's not going to understand, and she's not alone, and quite frankly, I have a hard time understanding your.
Park Mobile is, I mean, I understand people have a.
Well, and it glitches, I mean, there's times it goes down, I mean, and you would have that where you're.
So we're never going to transition into anything like that?
It would be, yeah, I was going to say, it would.
Never say never, but I mean, right now, we're just.
Maybe one side of the street. Maybe one side of the street.
Soon as people my age die, you're free to go.
I am your age. You know, maybe one side of the street signs and one side of the street's meters, you know? Split it up a little bit instead of 100%.
Another 10, 12 years, we'll visit that.
Don't do these side reverses. I, I'm still getting used to the snow emergencies.
Never mind. Sorry for being progressive here.
Thinking outside the box.
That's not outside the box. That's becoming the norm for so many cities. We need, we shouldn't think of it as outside the box.
Well, I'll take that back. We can be a progressive city too.
Yes, we can.
We're gonna do that.
And a sign is a lot cheaper than installing a, how much is a meter? Okay. Right. And we can make our own signs. All right, that's for a future discussion in my team meeting.
Go, go for it. You're on that committee. It's.
I know, I am.
Your job to get it done.
I'm gonna bring it up. Well, okay. Further discussion, sir?
Thank you.
But I don't think that'd save us enough that we're going to not have, or not needing a rate.
No, I'm not saying it well either. So, let's revisit those numbers then. Get the numbers that the mayor wants. And then let's look at maybe dropping back on the first level of the parking meter and shifting those dollars over to the monthly parking, right?
Do that.
And maybe it's not $10, maybe it's seven or eight. I mean, if you want to make it 10, great.
I'm guessing.
It needs to be.
Fines aren't that big of a deal compared to the other, but I can't, that's why I'd want to see it. I want to see.
What the collection rate?
Yep. And the parking ramps.
$10 is cheap enough. You can just not pay the meter and park there all day.
Oh, they won't do that, Matt.
No. $10 a month?
$10 for a day?
No.
You could be ticketed multiple times.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, you can have three or four tickets.
Ask my next door neighbor downtown.
Technically, they can ticket you every, so you park at a two-hour meter.
They can come around.
They can come around. Even, even if you've plugged the meter after two hours, technically, you can be ticketed.
But you're supposed to move.
Supposed to move. We don't do that. But if you get a ticket in the morning and they come back in the afternoon, your car's still there, you get another ticket.
Can.
Yeah, you can get two a day.
Experiment.
I've seen.
You won't get it because they'll look you up. You have your parking pass.
So, you, you, we'll, we'll pull those numbers and then like to see the monthly parker transition some.
I just want to see what the numbers are. I don't, I don't have any idea without a real good breakdown on where your revenue is. I wouldn't want to tell you where to switch or not switch until.
So, maybe can you give us those figures or try to get those figures, send them around to council and then ask for feedback or, or what, what the suggestion would be prior to you bringing it? So, we don't have to change it on the floor if possible.
What was the, what was the other infraction? The parking at a bagged meter? What'd that go up to?
From 35 to 50.
35 to 50.
And that's, that's more than just, that's more than just parking in a no parking zone, parking in front of.
No.
A hydrant or park, parking spot that's not a space. That can be any one of those. You're, you know, if you're, if you're not parked in your space, that's not an overtime meter.
And how much is if you're parking in a handicap stall?
200. That's state code.
The discussion's been good. And I like having a discussion because then the public will know what we're looking at doing. And, and you don't, you know, it's not gonna come back for first reading until September 12th.
Yep.
That's a month away yet. And we can always do the first reading only and then do second and third a week later. So, then we're over a month out.
Yeah, that's what we figured.
There's plenty of notice and there's plenty of discussion to be had on it.
How long you been on the job, Tiffany?
Hey, Warren, I'm the parking supervisor. I've been on the job for almost six and a half months.
Already, we're having 10 to 40% readings.
She knew when to retire. Yes, she did. Matt was good at that, yeah.
Just throwing that out there.
Right, yes.
Your salary that's called.
Any citizens want to be heard? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please. Seeing none, Matthew?
Uh, nothing today.
I'm assuming you've been gone on vacation. You have nothing, but go ahead.
Well, what I'm gonna say is, I'm on the public works team, so I am gonna follow up on, I, I already had a prelude, prelude to the parking rates, discussion on that. But I am gonna follow up on the meter slash sign to see if we can integrate some of that into the city and ease people into it.
Okay.
All right.
Please check with downtown partners again, too.
Well, I'm also on that board, a director, so I will talk to downtown partners about it as well.
Correct. I wouldn't mind emailing them the information once we get it.
Yeah. It's good to be back.
Mayor, I don't have anything, actually.
Last, are you recognizing me? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Last Friday evening, I attended in Des Moines, the celebration of 60 years of friendship with the state of Iowa and the state of Yamanashi. It was an outstanding program. A lot of good things came out of it. And some people even said, be sure and tell your mayor hello. Because you've worked on that relationship for a long time. And I said, the mayor has been trying to get me to go to Yamanashi City, our sister city, for years now. So, one of these days, mayor.
I think that'd be incredible.
One of these days. But 60 years, so 60 years ago, and I'm not real good on remembering history when it's thrown at me quickly. 60 years ago, state of Iowa sent 35, 60 plus. What'd you say?
The floods in Japan triggered the partnership, remember?
And the 35 hogs that they sent over.
Yeah, that's how we have world famous Iowa hogs in Japan.
Yes. 60 years ago.
Because their livestock was wiped out.
What's that?
Because their livestock was wiped out in the floods.
Yep.
Yeah.
And got them started. And we got them started back in the port.
Wow.
They remember, they air freighted those hogs.
They did.
At that time, yeah.
They did. Imagine that.
I've heard that story before from my father-in-law.
I was gonna say, I had never heard that story.
That was what.
Yeah, that's what triggered it.
That's what started the relationship. I didn't know specifically that was it, but I knew that the hogs were shipped over there. It is. My father-in-law told that story before.
And they very much are appreciative that we have a sister city in Yamanashi. And, and we're gonna.